I would like to call this West Carrollton Board of Education Business Meeting to order. It is Wednesday, May 17, 2023. Roll call, please.
Mr. Llewellyn is absent. Mr. Cox here, Ms. Harvey?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Mendy?
Here.
And now if you will all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as you can see, I'm not John Llewellyn. He is at the Miami Valley CTC graduation this evening. So as Vice President, I am taking over the meeting this evening so he can be out there giving. I'm not real sure whether they give their diplomas or they just have to be present. I've not been to it, so, but he is out there representing West Carrollton Schools. So we'll go around and we'll review everybody. We have Mr. Jack Hegg, who is our Business Manager. Mrs. Julie Jones, who is our Curriculum Director. We have Mr. Devon Berry, who is our Director of Human Resources. We have Nate Lundy, Board Member. Joe Cox, Board Member. We have our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Melissa Tice, who is sitting in for our Superintendent this evening. So we're just all miscombobulated. I'm Lesla Miller, Vice President, and we have this Autumn Harvey as a Board Member. And we haven't had our student rep manager team join us yet. I don't know, perhaps she will join us later. And we have our Treasurer, Mr. Ryan Sloan. We have recommended that the Agenda for May 17, 2023 meeting be adopted as presented. Do I have a motion?
Salute. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mendy?
Yes.
We do not have any comments from the public relating to Agenda Hides only, so we will proceed to the Communication Update. She is number seven.
Number seven.
Yes, lucky number seven with our Communication Assistant, Mrs. Quirrell.
First off, I want to remind everyone about the ways you can stay in touch with what's happening in West Carrollton. WestCarrolltonSchools.com is our website. West Carrollton City Schools, that's where you can find us on Facebook. And you can also go to WC City Schools on Twitter. Got a lot of fun things to show you tonight. Last night, I don't know if you got to go to the Intermediate Art Show, but it was fabulous. I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Hayes, the art teacher. She did a great job. And Dr. Woods was telling me prior to the meeting, they've been able to leave the artwork up. All the kids are being very responsible and not touching it or tearing it down. It looks great and there were a lot of people screaming in and out, so kudos to them. So also being creative at the Intermediate School. We have an amazing race going on. And this is happening in the math classroom of Mrs. Quarantini. And please apologize, I'll apologize her by this pronounced Quarantini. Okay, thank you. And she also is working with Mrs. Felton. I don't want to leave her name out because Mrs. Felton created a lot of props, different things. So last week, Dr. Woods approved the field trip. They went to Switzerland and this is where they were. They were checking out chocolate and I think on one of the tables you couldn't even see a tiny little piece of Swiss chocolate that they also got to enjoy. But they have obstacles and roadblocks that they have to do along the way. So a lot of fun for those kids. And then, you know how I am about the farm animals. We have chickens at Chanel. And it's called Chick Quest. It's a program through 4H. And 4H and the Ohio Agriculture Center make grants available that pays for an egg incubator, eggs, and student books. Teachers have to attend a one-day training through the 4H extension at Ohio State to be eligible. And the chicks will be rehomed to a farm, not the cafeteria, just so you know. So I want to congratulate the girls' track and field team. By the way, they won their division of the Miami Valley League, so very excited for them. They're going on to Regionals and Sectionals coming up. The first will be Friday, so if they do well in those, they may very well qualify to go to state, so good luck to them. Want to point out for those athletes, these young ladies went to the CTC. So they're receiving, I believe it's their career passport that they get at the CTC. Their diploma comes from us. So they're getting that tonight there. They're all planning to go on to college, but I especially wanted to recognize them and the time they've spent because they have gone back and forth participating in track and field as well as basketball throughout their time at the CTC. And speaking of senior spotlights, here are a few that are showing up on Facebook. And there's going to be more and more of them as we proceed towards graduation, which is June 1st at 7:30 PM, University of Dayton Arena. I put a link to the livestream, but you can find it on our Facebook page. It will also be on the banner of our Facebook page late in the afternoon on June 1st, so you could easily find that. And of course, we want to congratulate all of our graduates. They've all worked hard and congratulations to them. And wherever you go, you'll always be a Pirate. Watch for that information coming directly from your child's school. Last day of school is June 1st. And information is still coming, so watch for that. And again, please watch for Mr. Doyle. He's out in the parking lots directing traffic. Eyes up, phones down, go slow. Please watch for the little ones as they're walking to and from bus stops, to and from school, or on school property. P4K, just another teaser. If Maddie were here, she could tell you about it, but it'll happen, you'll find her. And that is all I have this evening, but I do want to introduce Mrs. Haffner. She's got some exciting news to share as well.
Thank you very much and good evening. Thank you for having us. And we're going to spotlight two seniors this evening and fantastic kids, both of them. I'm going to start with Anaya Johnson, if you'll make your way up here. I actually had some questions for them and I said, you know, I can ask you questions. And they're like, no, we got this. So I'm going to just step aside and allow them to share with you some of their highlights of their high school career. And if you can wait, you know?
Thank you so much. Hi, I'm Anaya Johnson. I just wanted to come and talk to everybody about my high school journey. So I just got a couple of questions that I answered. Where are you going to college and what are you majoring in? I would be going to Indiana Institute of Technology and I would be majoring in mechanical engineering. What do you want to do with this degree? I want to let everybody know that I do have my Associate's Degree in Engineering at Sinclair. I've been taking classes since my sophomore year and I hope to pursue a career in aerospace engineering at hopefully a big engineering company, NASA. So what are some highlights from each year of your high school career? I'd say my ninth grade year is the first time I joined the robotics team. Just learning the ropes and getting to learn everything and meet new people. My 10th grade year, I think, is starting to plan out the drill team plans that I had. I wanted to start a drill team and have a big group where everybody can be accepted and just dance and have fun. My 11th grade year was the first official year of the Pirates Drill Team. We made petitions and we got everything together and this is now my second year on the team. And then my 12th grade year, I'd say the biggest highlight was being the operator for the Pirate Robotics Team. I've been on the team for four years and I just feel very welcomed and very prepared for my engineering career. What am I most proud of? I'd say I'm most proud of getting my Associate's Degree in Engineering, but also I'm proud of getting my full tuition scholarship from Indiana Tech. It's called the Gil Scholarship and it pays for my bachelor's and my master's degree. What teachers have had a significant impact on me? I'd say the coach for the robotics team was Mr. Neil. I think he has really helped my passion for engineering grow and has inspired young engineers, including myself, to continue to want to prosper in the STEM fields. My second one is Ms. Lund. She has had a huge support system, she has been a huge support system since the beginning of my high school career. Even when people didn't believe in me or my plans for the drill team, she saw my vision and was so happy to get involved. The drill team wouldn't be what it is today without her. And lastly, my advice for underclassmen. Academically, I'd say that you should take advantage of college courses. Sinclair has a wide variety of courses for you to take in whatever career you want to go into. But other than that, I'd say to have fun and enjoy your teenage years. Go to basketball and football games and try to get as involved as you can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anaya. And here is your award for the Senior Spotlight. And we are, grass does not grow underneath Anaya's feet. I know, I remember her as a freshman coming into my office, she was feisty. She's a feisty woman and she still is. And she, when she sets her mind to do something, it gets done. So we are very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anaya. And next, another, oh, we're going to... Our second student is Nathan Llewellyn, if you will please come up to the podium. Nathan is our Student Body President and he also does not allow grass to grow underneath his feet. And he meets with me frequently and he's all, matter of fact, we were supposed to meet today and we weren't allowed, weren't able to because of a meeting that ran over. But I'm sure he wants something else from me. He always wants something and he's very convincing. And he's usually like, all right, all right, take it away.
All right. I'd like to start by thanking the Board and Ms. Haffner for having me here as a spotlight today. As Ms. Haffner said, my name is Nathan Llewellyn and I am the Student Body President at the high school. Through my time here, I've been on Student Council for four years now. I've been a marching man for four years and will be continuing marching man in college. I've been in the musical five times, twice while in high school. And I wanted to highlight a few things we were able to do on Student Council this year. From continuing a few things that we do annually such as the blood drive, the dodgeball tournament, and the student step basketball game. We lost again, but it was close. It was good. But we were also able to get a few new things such as food trucks and Field Day, which I hope our next Student Body President, Matthew McKeon, is able to continue, hopefully. And we were able to add in a few more pep rallies throughout the year as well. I'd like to say the thing I'm most proud of is just this year, being able to bring some new and exciting things to my peers here at the high school as well as just everything we were able to accomplish. There are so many teachers that have made an impact in my life, starting with pretty much the entire Social Studies Department. I'm going to Liberty University, majoring in Government with a focus on politics and policy, and they are a big reason as to why I decided to do that. Two specific teachers I'd like to highlight are Mrs. Carlisle, who was able to challenge me my sophomore year in the people as well as lead Student Council for the past, I don't know how long. And Mr. Howe, who was able to take Honors in American History, which seems like it might be somewhat boring class and turn it into a pretty fun class that I look forward to every day. And if I could leave the underclassmen just one thing, it'd be something, it would be this. And they're going to hear it probably a million times, but high school will go by in the blink of an eye. And it sounds cliche because everyone says it, but it really will. So enjoy your time, enjoy hanging out with friends, and make high school memorable experience. But also don't let that stop in the way of your education. You have to have a good balance of fun and discipline in your studies. So again, thank you for having me and have a good, mercy day.
This is your Senior Spotlight Award. I also want to make a comment with these two guys. Every year that they were in high school in some way has been affected by COVID. Even this year, it's, you know, it's post, the post-pandemic stuff. And even with all of that, they stand here very accomplished, kept it going, and we appreciate and are very proud of you both. Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you.
Yeah, very well done and congratulations. And thank you for being so accomplished and well spoken. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Okay, I am standing in. I have to apologize in advance for doing a little bit of reading up here as I present this information because this is Dr. Townsend's prep work here. So bear with me and I apologize for looking down at these notes so frequently. We're going to review the State and District Report this evening. And we are going to start, let me make sure which of these, okay, there we go. We're going to start focusing by focusing on student achievement. The first slide that we have here is a little bit difficult to read, but it focuses on our District Report card. And we've gone to the star rating system. There are two areas in the upper right-hand corner where we've received four stars. Those areas are progress and gap closing. Progress really is looking at where a student is from one year to the next and what is their individual rate of growth. And so you can see that we're doing a really strong job of that. And that's something new for us. This is one of our, these two are two areas where we have made the most amount of growth. And that is just growing kids from where they are one year to the next. And then also looking at gap closing, which focuses on subgroup performance of our students. When we, when we look at those, we're looking at growth based on past performance of students and reduction in educational gaps for student subgroups. The area that we made moderate progress in is early literacy. And you'll see that that is reflected there with three stars hanging up in the bottom center. This reflects our reduction in the number of students on reading improvement monitoring plans, our concentrated focus on phonological awareness in the early grades, and our focus on decoding using the 95% curriculum. Long-term impact of these efforts will eventually translate to overall improved achievement scores on state assessments across the board. And then you can see that we have in that first column, it focuses on achievement and graduation. We're making slight improvement in those areas, but those are areas that long-term we should see significant gains in. We've started seeing those leaps in early literacy and then individual progress in gap closing. That will translate down the road to improved achievement for everyone. This is a little bit difficult to read, so I apologize, a little small. But this focuses on gap closing, which is our subgroup data. And these are the results of our test scores by subgroup as well as for all students who were tested in math and ELA. This is just one component of the gap closing score. And the purpose of this data is to see what subgroups of students are meeting or exceeding the achievement goal in the two content areas and which subgroups need the most support. In both of these, they kind of flip. It's hard to see the colors delineated there. One is orange and one is red at the bottom, right above the teal color. But consistently, the three groups that we show the least amount of gap closing are for English learners, our African-American students, and our students with disabilities. So those are areas that we will have increased focus on. This one is reading diagnostic data using the I-Ready scores. You can see that 51% of our tested students are reading at or above grade level. 29% are within one year below grade level. And 20% are performing two years below grade level. Our areas of strength include phonological awareness, phonics, and high-frequency words. Targeted instruction and intervention is given to students who are scoring in the red zone. Okay, our I-Ready math diagnostic data is focused on this slide. 38% of our students are at or above grade level, while 39% are within one year of being on grade level. And 23% of our students are two years or more below grade level. Areas of strength include number sense and algebraic thinking. And these are areas that are focused on in our ONE Plan, which we'll talk more about in a little bit. All right, sources of data collection. And we focus on the whole child here. Staff have been trained on data protocols to triangulate the various sources of data. When we talk about triangulation, what we want to do is, we want to look, we want to be able to have predictive abilities. So when we have students who are taking I-Ready assessments, where are they scoring at the beginning of the year? And what do we know in past history in terms of what those starting scores need to be in order to get them to pass at the end of the year? So we're using a variety of data points to give us a good indication of how successful our students will be at the end of the year. Okay, we've got some areas here that are highlighted for safety and security and a positive learning environment. We have three SROs who are employed throughout the district and we implement PDIS and PACs throughout the district. We have nine mental health counselors. And we have a new initiative, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Initiative, which we'll talk a little bit more about in another slide. And then also the Parent Advisory Team. So this year, we started something new. We did a D E I audit. And so that stands for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And we, from that audit, we identified some areas of action planning. So you can see there that the first action plan was to create an equity statement, vision, and goals for the district. And on the left, below the picture of our students there, is our equity student that the team came up with. It says that West Carrollton Schools view diverse, let me read for my paper here. "West Carrollton Schools view diverse perspectives and backgrounds as assets. We are committed to empowering students, staff, and community through equitable education. And as a district, we are building relationships and a sense of belonging for students to reach their full academic and social potential." The second goal that we were able to achieve this year was to conduct PD for school administrators and teachers on culturally responsive leadership and teaching. We just finished a series of speakers on QPT Days. We had Michael Carter, who is the Chief Diversity Officer at Sinclair, present to our stu-, or I'm sorry, to our staff, not our students. And then also Dave Taylor, who is the Superintendent for DECA. Both of them received rave reviews from our teachers who really enjoyed that focused conversation and new learning. Some of the future action plans include implementing culturally responsive community engagement practices, fully implementing restorative practices district-wide, and supporting all staff members in engaging in respectful professional interactions with other staff members from culturally diverse backgrounds. I mentioned the ONE Needs Assessment a few slides ago as well. We have really focused on phonological awareness and phonics instruction at those early grades. The ONE Needs Assessment is something that we conduct triangulally and then we develop a ONE Plan, which gives us some really strong goal setting for ourselves as a district. We're starting already to see those improvements, as we mentioned, in early literacy. And we've really focused our instruction in math in the areas of algebraic thinking and number sense. So we look forward to even better performance down the line in those areas. All right, and what are we doing to address learning? We had ESAR funds, if you remember that. And we've really focused a lot of those funds on recovery and intervention. So we focused on learning loss and enrichment. We adopted the 95% curriculum and Haggerty for phonemic awareness and phonological awareness. We have focused on House Bill 410 and the development of attendance improvement plans to decrease absenteeism with mental health supports. We employ nine instructional parent professionals for reading and math instruction. And we have a new reading adoption, which I think you guys approved last time, which is called Benchmark. Some of our community engagement activities include the Business Advisory Council, Title I Parent Nights, blended conference options, weekly school updates, mid-year detailed updates, and things, fun things even like launching a fire department. In terms of community engagement, additional ways that we reach out to the community would be the update from the Superintendent through weekly emails. The Five Things to Know that I think Janine, I don't know if maybe we lost her. Janine puts that out to Weekly to staff, which is always fun. The Points of Pride, which is a beautiful production. And ongoing building project updates. Looking ahead, we have our 204 Building and the 712 Building Project underway. We did just adopt Benchmark for K-5 programming. And we have new STEM projects in the district as well. Some shots of our new building, new buildings. And these are our salutatorians and valedictorians who were highlighted at last month's Board Presentation. So the rumors are true. Pirate Pride is spreading in your West Carrollton Schools. Okay, I got through that, somebody else's presentation. All right. Next, I'm going to hand this over very happily to three of our principals. We actually have David White, who is our newly confirmed principal for next year at the high school. And he's giving Mrs. Haffner a break tonight. She gets to sit in the audience. Also, we have Mr. Krissick, who will be presenting, and Dr. Woods. So I'll call you guys on up, hand it over to you.
Good evening to the Board and to everyone that is here. I am Monica Woods and the Principal at the Intermediate School. This year, we've all experienced some of the same challenges when it comes to our students and trying to really keep them focused on learning and growing socially when it comes to telephones in the schools. And so we all got together and looking at our data, decided we've got to really do something to be able to eliminate that as a serious challenge so that our kids will be able to focus more and we can really put our energies into continuing to build a positive climate around the school. So, make sure I do this right. So why are we using the Yonder Phones? As I just said, in recognizing that cell phone, cell phones have been a really big part of the discipline challenges at each of our buildings. We're looking at ways that we can be able to decrease those challenges and increase the learnability of our buildings. So while we know that phones have become an integral part of our daily living, we also found that learning and social behaviors improve drastically when phones are not around. And students are engaged in those that are right there in their face, their teachers, their classmates, and then able to fully engage in the learning that's going on. A survey that was taken, and I believe this is by Yonder. The Yonder Corporation took this, did this survey of 900 school partners on phone-free environments. And you could see the data there. It says 65% of the schools saw an improvement in academic performance, 74% improvement in school, student behavior, and 83% improvement in student engagement in the classroom. The cell phone discipline data that we have in our district. We looked at the high school, 1,169 referrals regarding cell phone usage, which is approximately 26% of the total referrals for the year to date. The middle school had 764 referrals, being 20% of the total referrals. And then the Intermediate School, 198 referrals, which gave us 19% of our total referrals. Some of those numbers may seem small, but when you look at our student body, the time that we have in the day, that takes away a major part of students being in the classroom and learning when teachers have to stop teaching or an activity has to be halted because of a telephone issue. Also, the telephone issues are very much correlated with... with other issues between students that cause referrals to the office and loss of learning time, suspensions, AEP, detentions, things like that.
So I wanted to touch on like what Yonder usage looks like in the area as far as what other schools might have implemented it already, as well as what that implementation looks like and some of the details associated with it. So we consulted and reached out to administrative teams from Stivers School for the Arts, which is a Dayton Public School, grade seven through twelve. And some of the details involving the Yonder bags, which we will continue to dive into, is that those bags are checked out to each student at the beginning of the school year. They have chosen to charge replacement bags to be ten dollars for Stivers. And some of the consequences that they use when rolling this out, the first time that the violation of that a phone is being used, the phone is collected and the parent or guardian is contacted. And then the phone is returned to the student at the end of the day for the first one. For a second infraction, the phone is collected and then discipline starts with maybe an after-school detention. And then can progress for repeated violations to things like in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, et cetera. They said certainly, there are tips and tricks on the internet for what to do with the bags, to try to break into them. So they'd also like spent time educating their students, hey, this is what the purpose of this is, as well as this is the procedure that's being followed. From a middle school perspective, I had reached out to Trotwood Madison Middle School's principal there in their first year of implementation for Yonder. And similarly, their bags are checked out to individual kids. Every kid gets a bag at the beginning of the school year. They've chosen to charge twenty dollars for a replacement bag. And their entry process basically outlines, any student who's in possession of their phone is expected to have their bag out and show that they lock the bag shut as they walk into the building. If they don't see it, then they don't expect to see it for the rest of the day. And that's the goal that with any of this implementation is that for us to remove the phones from the learning environment so that we can focus on teaching and learning more effectively. At Trotwood Middle, consequences for noncompliance included the first time a student may have had their phone out or not had their phone locked up in their bag. Parents or guardians had to pick up the phone. Second one, they went to a one-day out-of-school suspension for Trotwood Madison Middle School. They did, as they think through like year two of implementation, they're exploring ideas. And we'll get into the consequences that we have come up with as a team of how you suspend the phone as, instead of the student, and trying to do that effectively. And I believe now all Dayton Public School, high schools, not just Stivers, but all high schools, use this system as well. So just a quick touch on what implementation would look like and some of the details behind it. And then I think if we are able to pull up some of the videos, there's two links embedded in the slide that we can pull up those videos. So we did have, maybe about a month ago, a couple weeks ago, a Yonder visitor, an employee of Yonder come out and see our entry and dismissal at all of our buildings, the intermediate, the middle and the high school, to see logistically what that could look like. Like I said, the main idea of the process is each student has a bag checked out to them. As they walk into the building, they don't have to tap it against anything. It just contains a lock that you hold and you clamp shut. And once you clamp it shut, you can't open it again. At dismissal, the only difference of what dismissal looks like is you would have magnet stations or Yonder dismissal stations around any of the exit points of your building so that those magnets could be screwed on in the case of the middle school, where, for example, Mr. Tittle, our SRO, would probably go around, screw those up. And then we'd have staff at each spot to make sure that those weren't plucked off the wall and taken with them on the way out the door, if that makes sense. Students then, as they walk by, they just tap that magnet, the magnet, and the bag pops back open. They keep the bag and they can pull their phone out. With what the services the company provides is actually help us with implementation. So not only have they walked through what this could look like at the intermediate, the middle and the high school, but they would also, they'll be with us in the fall when we launch this, which is going to be incredibly helpful because they're another set of hands that help with the implementation of it. So the outline for our three buildings is that we will teach the expectations August sixteenth through the eighteenth. So in the fall, we start school on a Wednesday. And the consensus is, let's teach and go through those expectations and teach that again and teach it again through those three days with the plan to launch on Monday, August twenty-first, when it comes to actually implementing and using that in real time. So if you click the first link, How Yonder Works, a quick demo, you can see a quick video of, hopefully, of what it looks like in practice.
So this is kind of Yonder. Let's say you're going to see a show, take in a performance, and as you enter, they ask you to hand over your phone. And so staff member would take your phone and put it in one of the... So this is how Yonder works. Let's say you're going to see a show, take in a performance, and as you enter, they ask you to hand over your phone. And so staff member would take your phones and put it in one of the Yonder pouches. Now you take your phone back, now I have my phone. But I can't open the phone. I can't access the phone. I cannot open the pouch. This is locked. Go in, watch the show, enjoy the show. During the performance, let's say my phone starts to ring, and I'm going to hear it ringing. I might even feel it vibrating in my pocket. If I want to access my phone, I would need to leave the theater, go back to the lobby. Staff member would unlock the pouch. Hit it, and I can access my phone. That's done.
So that obviously is a quick demo in terms of what the magnet looks like and the actual clasping of it. We have a second video that is also from Yonder that kind of features some of the ideas behind the implementation as well as the impact it's had on schools.
Ask a teacher, they'll tell you cellphones are still an issue and a big classroom distraction.
And now thousands of schools around the country, including right here in the metro, are taking back those classrooms with a small cellphone pouch.
Today, ninety-five percent of teens have access to a smartphone, and forty-five percent self-report that they're online almost constantly. Smartphones have penetrated all aspects of daily life. But of special concern to educators is their prevalence in schools. The average kid gets their first smartphone at age ten. That's fifth grade. Most will open their first social media account within the next few years. But some schools are beginning to question the wisdom of allowing kids to enter the classroom with tiny computers and social networks in their pockets. These concerns, along with the general annoyance at phone-gazing concertgoers, led thirty-two-year-old Graham DeGony to build a device called Yonder. Users drop their phone in, the pouch locks, and can only be reopened with a large magnet.
Come in, through the door, and you open the pouch.
Get our phone out, make sure it's powered off on the airplane.
Put your phone inside, and you close it. And throughout the day, you can't open it.
For me at first, I thought I were going to like a...
A pouch? Seriously?
I barely came to the school. They just started doing the Yonder thing. And I was like, oh my, why am I...
Everyone was realizing that they weren't actually getting any work done. And like their schoolwork was like declining because of the phone.
So this is phone usage per day before Yonder. How many messages did you get? How many times did you check social media? How many hours did you spend on your phone? How would you describe these numbers?
Big, surprising.
Excessive.
A little too much.
I mean, like sophomore year, I tried to get my folders out like every day. Just checking my folders constantly.
You were just constantly comparing yourself to other women on your feed, and it definitely takes a toll on your self-image.
I got more focused than worried. My grades went up.
I was sitting alone, and I saw this other kid across from me who was also sitting alone. And can't find my phone. So I went up to them, and I introduced myself, and actually met someone new.
Three days later, I was just like, what are we going in today? Because I can't even go.
Was distracted and honestly happier, kind of, because they're not worrying about what's going on in social media.
Interacting way more. Like, instead of being on the phone and having earbuds in and not interacting with people, a lot of people are interacting with people, getting to know other people.
The atmosphere is seem more positive. I'm always used to having it right here and not having it for eight hours throughout the day. It changes, changes.
Amazing moment happened with him. And then everybody who was there all pulled out their phones and were filming the moment. Nobody was in the moment. Everyone was documenting the moment.
You want a break from your phone. You don't even realize it.
Right.
You know, you want a break.
Oh, responsible, disciplined adults have a hard time watching a comedy show without a distraction, their phone.
We all need a break, just from that technology, just for a minute.
So as we begin to roll it out, we obviously want to make sure and we have a plan for communicating this information to families. Additionally, it was really interesting, even as a part of collecting data for this process. One of my eighth-grade math teachers collected information on like the screen time for kids with phones, and it was north of eight hours was the average, which is pretty remarkable when you think about a twenty-four-hour day. So when we are outlining or thinking through like, how do we communicate this to families for next steps? These are some of the ideas that we have. And I know that you have a handout with you that has some talking points as we begin this communication rollout. So we have a parent guardian letter that is universal, so the same five through twelve. The intent, the plan is to send that out via one call on May twenty-sixth in grades five through twelve. And then again, to repeat it the week of May thirtieth. And the idea is to send that letter out multiple times and then to begin, starting to use the language from the letter in our newsletters, where it just outlines some of the reasons why, some of the data, as well as how we teach this process. We certainly want to, we will have, and here in a minute, we'll talk about plans for discipline or noncompliance with such policy. And we certainly want to sample what this process looks like. So one of the best pieces of advice the Trotwood Middle School principal gave me was, like have this at your open house so that you can see it, feel it, see how the process works, talk through it in an informational setting, just to kind of outline it and give everyone a heads up. So there was a consensus in our buildings as we think through orientation or open houses, what that could look like and how we communicate that information all to families. So Mr. White will talk a little bit about some of the noncompliance conversations.
I know it'll come to a shock to most of you when you ask your child for their phone and they look at you like you're crazy. I've raised five kids, and I still remember taking it from my youngest. And I really started to worry for my life. I thought I was going to wait till I was asleep and get even. So understand this. And we had a set of nonnegotiables in my building this year, and one of them was no phones. We didn't have Yonder bags. It worked out very well until certain people didn't start to follow the process anymore, and it fell apart pretty quick. So having the bag is the next level that I can tell you will work very well once we're over the hump. I promise you this, and you can ask about research. A text message gives you a dopamine hit. And actually, you can physically feel that, oh my God, I have a message. And the kids have gotten used to that. So now when we're taking that away, the meltdowns are going to happen. So we have to be understanding of the emotional side of this. And I'll be very honest with you. I saw third graders, when we took their laptops this year, have meltdowns because they were so attached to that screen. So when we start talking about the discipline, as they come in the door, the first offense, you know, we'll take it and return it at the end of the day. If they, you know, if they give it to us, if they're noncompliant, we have to take them to the office immediately and call the parents, say, look, they're not giving up their phone. They're choosing their phone over their education. And we're going to have some parents that say, I want them to have it. And we're going to have to explain to them that's not how it's going to work. So there's going to be those moments. So prepare yourselves for those. The second offense, the parent must pick up the phone at school. The third one, the parent picks up the phone, there's a detention that comes along with it. So this process, as you see it up there, is progressive. And I will be honest with you. I don't think we're going to have a whole lot get to three. I think once they're in, once they get through one and two, they'll be like, all right, they're not playing. This is how it's going to go. And probably ninety-five percent of the students will be compliant. And like I said, I lived through it this year, and it took a lot. It'll put an end to coordinated bathroom breaks. It'll put an end to a lot of the fights, a lot of verbal abuse that comes towards the adults when you're telling them to put the phone away. And a lot of times, like I said, that dopamine hit is what we're going to have to work through in this process. And it's not forever. It's like that girl said, after week three, they put their phone away, they're used to not having it, and they're getting re-engaged in the classroom. And I think our mission, being engaged in mind, the muscles and the imagination, this is an important step for us to take, to gain that control back over that media piece. And my last note is, can we just thank Erica at the end of this for a PowerPoint? Because mine will never look this good, never. So he did a nice job. Thank you.
I think there's one other piece of information, just odds and ends, that we wanted to make sure to add into this. And Monica or David, if there is anything that I missed, let me know. Right now Amy's here as well, and Candace helped with the presentation too. Other electronic items that will go into the pouch will include smartwatch, AirPods. That's something that's been typical with both Trotwood Middle as well as Stivers, as well as any of the recommendations of Yonder. Obviously, if there's a medical reason for a smartwatch, then that's an exception, just like a medical note would be. If a student were to forget their pouch, what is typically done is the student, the phone is turned in to the office for the day, and then they pick it back up at two-ten. And like, hey, I forgot this, let me turn it in, no big deal. We do plan to charge ten dollars for the replacement pouch across five through twelve. And then within our student code of conduct, we plan to educate in that the intentional destruction or altering of a pouch would be a level-two violation of the student code of conduct. There's a, in there, there's one about destruction of school property. So those are just some of the odds and ends associated with it and the ideas behind implementation, so.
Anybody have any questions?
All right, starting with some wolf jokes here. I won't put this down because I always make a loud noise when I do that. So I remember, it was middle school. I'll never forget. And I won't say the teacher that did this to me. I'll never forget though. But I, my phone rang during one of like, we had some, where all the kids were in the auditorium and all that. My phone rang, and I forgot to turn it off or whatever. So I pulled out my phone to turn it off because like it was dead silent in there. I'll never forget that. It was the weirdest feeling. And then sure enough, the teacher took my phone, gave me a detention. And I was like, that's the first time I've ever gotten in trouble, whatever. But what makes me wonder is, in class, by the way, this guy, I really like this idea. I think communication between students is extremely important. And I think it's crazy. I checked my phone, whatever, like how long to get on your phone. I checked it like a week ago. And like for a day, I had like forty-five minutes. I'm like, I need to calm down. And have someone put eight hours in on a phone is just wild to me, you know? And that's lacking human connection, which is something that I've always been known for, be involved in the community, be involved with each other. But, you know, in the case of, let's say they have their phone in their bag or whatever, and it's a Yonder bag, and it goes off. Does the teachers have keys to like unlock it so they don't ring in the middle of class? Do they just walk out the door and like...
I assign administrators to each hallway for next year. I mean, every one of us. So my protocol would be if it's in, let's say Kathy's room, she just calls, someone should be within reach in a minute to two minutes.
Okay.
Let us deal with it.
Yeah.
Because I don't need any more friction that's happening right now between the students and the staff. This is a big one. Let us handle it. Because we call a kid out in the hallway... Cause we can call the kid out in the hallway, we don't have to embarrass them, just say, can you hang up, let me get back in there, go back in there and get the lock.
Yeah, cause I know that's gonna be something, you know, I mean, there's kids that are gonna forget to come off of phones. And somebody's gonna call them and now that's, they're stuck in the class, I'm sure, and like, that's gonna always cause some headaches, so. I'm like, just before I get.
It'll take a while, like I said, there'll, there'll be a bump and then it'll calm down.
Yeah, and that's what I'm guessing is gonna be the situation and that's what I was gonna ask you from Trotwood and Bay Public. Was it pretty much, everyone was mad at first and then just kind of, at the end of the year, people kind of forgot about that being an issue? Cause seems like that happens a lot, or, you know.
My guess will be the first three or four weeks, you know, it'll be routine. They'll start figuring out the ways around it, which will be humorous for me. Cause kids are kids, I mean, they're gonna try every which way to get to it, let's see what inventive way they come up with.
Yeah.
And how long does it take me to catch on, who really struggles to even go to college?
They will, if Google searched it already.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure there are already a lot of some, so, okay, well, that was just my question, I appreciate it.
My, my question is, have you thought about giving them access back to the phones at lunchtime?
Well, my only problem with that is, is, is when I went through the referrals, and I've been reading them for four days. Ninety, ninety percent of our problems are happening during that time. Most of the instigation, what's happening is coming from the phone. So we're gonna leave them in the bag till the end of the day for a while.
Alright, so my question would be, I know that you said during dismissal, they get the phone back and have them locked. And that would require that they touch it against something that is magnetic. Have you guys considered, and I'm sure it's gonna be kind of a trial and error experience, but the carving out of time that's gonna take? Because that's a lot of students to consider and putting the bussing and getting everyone out the door in timely fashion, and this is my concern.
Sure, sure. So when working with Yonder, um, one, the, the big difference between entry and dismissal and the time labor is, um, like increasing the number of exits at dismissal. At least certainly at the middle school, I would assume probably high school too. And that it was, they made it very clear, it's very quick, like it's a walk by, tap and keep moving. So initially in terms of like that first week of rollout, there's certainly gonna be some buffer time where we extend it. Kind of like in our wonderful middle school locker base and the challenges that those present. We, at the beginning of the year, I think we had five minutes, um, for them to like get used to the locker, open it. And now it's down to two or three. And we would shave it off a little bit, cause we're, we'd look at the hallways and be like, oh, we're clear, like we're gonna change. So I think certainly like in those initial weeks, there will be explicit plans to make sure like, hey, if we dismiss at 2:10, let's get ready at 2:07 to make sure that we're in these different spots. And I, I also admit the multiple dismissal points. Like at the middle school, we'll have multiple points, both at the walker side, car rider side, as well as the bus side.
And I think Eric maybe, uh, touch on the point about the visit that we've already had and the the support that we have and, and they've already looked at our arrival and dismissal process and they make recommendations.
Yep, so a, a Yonder consultant had come out and seen all of our entries and dismissals. And did not really express any concerns with like logistics in terms of thinking through what other schools are doing. He offered like input on, at the high school, making sure that we use lock boxes instead of just like going around and trying to screw up, screw on the magnets, for example, to increase the efficiency of it. That was definitely a clear point, as well as just making it very known, like we're gonna see, we're going to be there initially to help with the manpower too. Uh, which I think was very helpful to hear. Cause certainly, there were lots of questions that I would ask, like, so where's it, where's a good point for it to be, for it to be like screwed onto the wall? And they had, or like what are other schools do when it, when it's a high traffic space? Because that middle school building is a challenge, right? And certain stairwells are not ideal, so it's like, let's make sure we have it in this place or this spot. As well as assigning duties of our staff to be in those spaces, like that's something that, um, our staff buy-in. And buy-in with the phone challenge is going to only help us. Because sometimes there's, oh, I got caught up with this. And the phone motivation with staff is a, is another variable too, they'll be there.
And, and I'll be honest with you, I, I do bus duty, I'm a crazy one, the likes be out there. At the end of the day, they're trying to get out as fast as they can to get that bag over. Dismissal will be cut down to the most efficient time. Like I'm sitting there thinking, you're like, how do we put them on the bus? So they hit the Yonder bag on the bus, you can't open it till you're on the bus. Now get the bus out of here before you just come back with a problem. So I don't think that would be that big of an issue for, for the high school.
Okay, I'm sure all the students are being very excited to leave to get access to that, that's a good point.
Put that on the bus.
And if they forget to, uh, hit the magnet on the way out?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, before you walk out, that guy's like, you're either closing your backpack and you're climbing up the bus.
What happens then? Well, we, we have, I, I don't know that we would circle back, the magnets, if we have to, we can get additional magnets that we keep on the bus. If, if that's what we have to do, we're not gonna do it perfectly the first week, 100%, it's not gonna be perfect. So if we have to come up with, do Jack and I talked about dismissal? And do we have to add five minutes at the end of dismissal time? If we had to shave one minute off of every class period, but we capture the amount of instructional time and, and meaningful engagement for kids during the day, we can figure those things out.
Absolutely. And Cleveland's already implemented this last year, that's a huge district.
They could have a good, the entire district did it last year as well.
Um, so my question is for students who don't, um, arrive like on time, like cause they don't have a first period? And then students who leave like early, will there be accommodations or the locks on like a timer, that kind of thing?
No, they'll, we'll make that be an easy one. Like you guys, like you said, if you don't have a first period when you roll in, sign in, we can have something right there. And do the same thing on the way out, like put one in the office for the sign in.
Okay, so like they would go in the office, get it checked, okay, thank you.
I think the technology is a bit greater than what it really is, it's just magic. It's like, uh, the clamp on clothing, um, that stops that, when you see them, that, that's essentially what it is, that's what it is.
I got Yonder lag from you.
One of the things that, that I find challenging, um, and most everybody knows, I'm a coach. And I'm a tennis coach and tennis can be canceled like that. And our announcements, Candace, don't listen, our announcements are just awful, let's just say that. The kids don't hear them, they don't pay attention, there's rooms that cannot be heard, there's so much going on. And God forbid, I have a match that gets canceled in the 11th hour, so to speak. And I have kids going to the bus that aren't supposed to, uh, four and away match. And that, the way I've always done is I've connected with my team captain to let him know, he lets everybody else know. Now I'm left, because I can, I mean, we're gonna have to improve that communication a lot. Because it's, it is a problem. And I run into this frequently.
We'll, we'll work through it, I mean, I've had buildings like that, like the old Belmont building. You couldn't, they didn't even work. So when we had stuff like that, we almost went door to door. And just pulled the kids, hey, it's canceled today, make sure you get on the bus. I mean, that's not uncommon for, for my world at all to go and do that. So we'll find ways to, to solve that issue.
Cause I know that that is gonna make a problem.
Something, so something we've done at the middle school is like with our P A system, if it's, in spaces where it can't be heard, you've increased the number of radios to, for staff, um, to make sure that those announcements get repeated on the P A and then also via radio. So that's certainly like, that in addition to like teaming, we've had, each team has created a text chain. So the messages can also go out that way. Because from a, from a communication standpoint, there's no reason for it not to be effectively communicated if, if not with us doing this, so.
The only thing that I could say, um, and this is because of having my sons in the district, sorry this happened. The communicate, the communication at the high school, when you call and leave a message, sometimes you don't hear, people calls back.
I'm, I'm gonna address that.
So that, that's, that's, that's one of the things that I was wondering about.
You can't do this and not fix it yet.
Right.
So that's the sit-down conversation that I have.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. Now, with these bags, alright, they look kind of small. And you mentioned you're gonna fit AirPods in there and like a watch. I mean, and I know there's things that are much bigger than AirPods, like how are you gonna fit these things inside that tiny little bag? Is, is it that loose of a bag where you can just shove a bunch of stuff? Really?
It's like a new print.
Well, that kind of answers my other question, can't you just hit the button on the phone through the bag to turn it off, like a drink? It's awful. Oh, big butt stretching, okay, I'm like, shoot, that might just solve my other question, if you could just turn it off through the bag, okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions, thank you very much?
Thank you, thank you guys.
Fantastic presentation.
Alright, so now we'll move on to our discussion topics. And we have a few, uh, amended policies. The following topic will be discussed by the board. The public is invited to observe this discussion, generally the board will take no formal action on discussion topics. However, in those instances where the board may choose to act, such notice will be given during the introduction of the discussion topic. This is the second reading, uh, for this particular one and it will be voted on. Yeah, down at the bottom somewhere. I saw this. We, we are going to vote on it later in the, oh, item number 21. Mr. Sloan, I will turn it over to you.
So this is, uh, the, the second read and it is addressing policy 6423, use of credit cards. And as we reviewed last, at our last meeting, just a very, very minor change to this policy. Where we have to be specific on the exact people who have the authority to use the credit cards. And we add, we added this speed, Speedway, um, gas card and we just had to, had, needed to add, uh, transportation office staff, bus drivers and mechanics as potential users of this card, uh, which will be maintained by the transportation coordinator, supervisor.
Do you want to have any questions? Send it back then. Alright, um, and as I noted, uh, we will be voting on this, uh, on item number 21. So now we go on to item 10, which is Mr. Sloan again for a couple of finance.
I ask that the board approve as presented items 10A and 10B.
Any motion in second?
So good.
Second.
These are the minutes of the last meeting and then the, uh, the standard financial reports. The financial reports are for the 10 months, July of 22 through April of 23. And as indicated on the cover sheet, um, revenues, the expenditures are very in line with, with the estimate. And our revenues are coming in a little higher than estimate, so, uh, we're looking to finish this year in, in better shape than the forecast that was prepared at the end of November, so things are running well.
Any overall call then, for item number 10?
Mrs. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Milk?
Yes.
Mr. Monday?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Item number 11, kids' your five-year forecast.
I ask that the board approve the five-year financial forecast as presented.
Any motion in second?
Absolutely.
Second.
Every district across the state has to update their five-year forecast and send it to O D E by the end of November and the end of May. We reviewed this five-year forecast with a finance committee meeting, uh, last week. Uh, Mr. uh, Mr. Monday was there, Mr. Lawland was not able to make it. And, um, the main thing that I, for, for, the main thing that I went over and, which I highlighted on the cover sheet that I gave you, is just the fact that we in every other district across the state of Ohio, um, putting together these forecasts. And these are just best estimates, um, for how we're gonna finish this year and the next four years. And the biggest variable, uh, which we won't know until the end of June is, is state funding and what the senate is gonna do, regarding the buying of a budget that starts July 1. And as I've communicated, um, what I did was I just took the midpoint of the governor's budget and the House budget. And, and so our forecast is choosing those numbers. And hopefully, hopefully the, uh, the senate version of the budget is very similar to the House, which means our forecast, would, would get, would be improved, uh, since I'm just using the average of the governor in the House. It's kind of impossible to predict what the state budget is gonna look like, so, I mean, all we, all we do is make our best guess and, and the five-year forecast, they can be submitted and updated, um, as many times as you want during the school year. And we just, uh, we in every district just have to get a forecast with our best guess, um, to O D E by May 31.
Do you have any questions?
On, uh, on number three, you have the Escher funds. Some money's moved back to the general fund in fiscal year '24 and in '25. So if we don't use the money that provided to us in the Escher, we're not being penalized for not using that money? And it's been approved to move into general funding at, at this point of these years?
I mean, most of those two, the two numbers that you're talking about are, you know, I mean, so, you know, Escher had, you know, part, a good part of Escher was for new initiatives to address learning loss. But the other part of Escher, the districts, um, districts use the other part of Escher to help them fund the existing operations. So we were temporarily able to move staff from the general fund to the Escher funds for a few years. And that, that's, you know, that save, you know, while we're doing that, that saves us general fund dollars for a couple of years. And what you're referring to are staff that are temporarily being paid out of Escher, but since those funds expire, they have to be moved back into the general fund. So we're gonna, we're, we're gonna spend every single penny of Escher funding that we've been allocated. And, and a good part of the Escher funding is to help our general fund, um, out in terms of paying, paying personnel costs.
Might answer the question.
If we are not penalized, so part of the application included, um, there, there were, I wanna say, I feel like it went to Q. So let's say that there were 20 allowable expenses for Escher funds. We were required to spend 20% to mitigate learning loss during COVID.
Right.
So we've done that and those were supposed to be research-based, evidence-based practices. So we definitely made sure that we did that, we went well above the 20%. Uh, we, we have funded those, uh, the nine paraprofessionals that we talked about, the S E L coaches, the S R Os. Some of that was, was funded there, um, what are some other things, Devon?
I mean, I know there were a lot also, like air purification and helping out with vaccinations and tutoring and all that kind of stuff. But at one point, we were told, from what I remember, we were told that that money's gonna be used just for that. So what, so what I'm asking is, we have two numbers here for '24 and '25, that can be released back to the general fund without.
Those are expenses going back to the general fund, not, that's not dollars, those are expenses that they're gonna go back into the general fund.
That means we're paying for them right now, we're paying for them with Escher funds. But beginning in '24, we're gonna start using general funds to pay for those items. But what I was gonna say is, one of the allowable expenses with Escher funds is continuity of service. And so they wanted to make sure, if you think back to when we were shut down during COVID, that's when the first round of Escher funds, we've had Escher one, Escher two and Escher three. That first round of funds, part of what they wanted to do was make sure that even though schools were closed, everybody continued to get a.
that even though schools were closed, everybody continued to get a paycheck. So we had to spend some of that money toward continuity of service.
Answered it, thank you.
ESR, the third round of ESR is the ESR portion that had the twenty percent restriction to address learning loss.
Anybody else have any questions? Alright, and we'll do roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
We'll go on to item number twelve. Mr. Barry, good evening.
Good evening. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the following personnel items, uh, listed as twelve A through twelve F.
Any motion in second, please?
Second.
Any comments?
Uh, one comment, I'd like to welcome Claire Lyons, um, as Kim Harvey is moving on. Um, we appreciate the job that she's done, the superintendent with us. But welcoming Claire Lyons, it's, it's really good that we were able to find an experienced ENS coordinator. Uh, it's a, I mean, it's a skill that's difficult to find. And, and we had, when Kim became our ENS coordinator, we had to train her. And that took a long time. Uh, but I get it, Claire, she's already doing the job, so we won't lose the staff.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Item number thirteen deals with athletics.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve the following personnel items, item thirteen A through thirteen E.
Any motion in second, please? Salute.
Second.
Any comments?
Normal procedure every year. Um, we now redo our coaches at the end of the year and rehire them throughout the summer or in the appropriate season.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Upstate.
Item number fourteen. This is Kelly.
Alright, uh, the superintendent recommends that the West Carrollton Board of Education approve placement of the following administrative personnel in the following positions and that the following steps effective August first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion is second, please?
Salute. Second.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, number fifteen, the superintendent recommends that the West Carrollton. We have to vote. We have to do board. Yes, we do. Sorry, we have to vote. We're outside.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Item number fifteen. There you go. Alright, back, back at it. The superintendent recommends that the West Carrollton Board of Education approve placement of the following personnel in the following positions and that the following levels or steps effective July first, twenty twenty-three. Um, and use our, our unclassified employees. Any motion in second, please?
Salute.
Second.
And roll call.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Mill?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Item number sixteen, nothing else.
The superintendent recommends that the West Carrollton Board of Education grant an administrative contract to the following administrator for the period of time indicated.
Any motion in second?
Salute. Second.
Any comments? Mr. Hag, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, we welcome Kathy, who's our new Transportation Coordinator. She's been in the Transportation Office for almost fifteen years now, uh, working as a, from bus driver up through dispatcher. Um, and she, uh, she'll step right in, keep things moving. Had a good, strong crew of applicants and Kathy stood out among all of them. So it'll be a nice change. And I've been starting to work with Kathy already to fill her position now. And bringing somebody else as dispatcher, uh, she's had the ground running, she's ready to get going, so.
I wanna congratulate her, she drove my bus the other day, so. Wonderful. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Item number seventeen deals with Warren County.
The superintendent recommends that the West Carrollton Board of Education grant an administrative contract to the following administer, administrator for the period of time indicated. And this is a school psychologist position.
Any motion in second? Salute.
Second.
Any comments?
I, yeah, I will say, uh, well, Mr. Barry stepped out, but we both marvel at the fact that every year we have been able to fill our school psychologist positions. Um, and, and Elizabeth is coming to us from the ESC. She has a little bit of experience, big shoes to fill. Uh, we are replacing Liza Hunt and then also Jordan Fishback, who was one of our interns and then later became a school psych. All of them have, have done a great job for us. And we're eager to have Elizabeth join us.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Item number eighteen deals with the ESC.
The superintendent recommends that the board approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four agreement with the Montgomery County Educational Service Center as presented.
Any motion in second, please?
Salute.
This is our usual. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Item number nineteen deals with the Warren County.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center as presented.
Any motion in second, please? Salute.
Second.
Just our usual.
Just the same, yeah.
Any roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Item number twenty, is there anything we can understand here?
I ask that the board approve as presented the memorandum of understanding between the West Carrollton Education Association and the Board of Education of the West Carrollton State regarding section twelve point oh-two of article twelve.
Any motion in second, please?
I motion.
Second.
Um, so very minor, uh, edit that we needed to make to the, to the union contract with the teachers to address, uh, situations, um, for teachers that were, that were leaving the district. Um, we just need to add dates after, uh, after July of twenty-three.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Item number twenty-one deals with our policy.
I ask that the board adopt as presented the proposed updated policy of the West Carrollton Board of Education, policy number sixty-four twenty-three.
Any motion in second?
Salute.
Second.
And this is what was read earlier.
Correct.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Left of the mat. Now we'll go to comments and reports. And we will have, uh, a report from this committee.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, I'm excited to share the name of our, um, little organization. We're calling it P for K, which stands for Pirates for Kindness. Um, I'm gonna continue to work on this over the summer. Um, and hopefully we're, reach out to the, um, our community for a community project to do, um, starting in the next school year. Um, so it's gonna kinda be put on hold a little bit, just 'cause school's ending soon. But there'll still be things happening behind the scenes. Um, so it'll hopefully, um, within the fall, we will, um, and within a couple of weeks of school starting, we'll be able to pick students for, to participate. And then, um, eventually pick dates and, um, have like a first trial in the first, first quarter and, um, work with all the principals, um, and board and coordinating, um, like in school events. Um, and then, as well as, um, with the next school year, we did not get another member for the board, so, um, I will be coming back, but.
I would totally love your.
It's, I was wondering if there was a way we could reopen that, just, or like, I don't know.
I'm sure we can.
Okay, just 'cause I would love to have another person.
Correct. I'm sure Mr. Llewellyn would allow that.
But don't tell him about the name, 'cause he's still, he's still, you haven't told him yet.
Yes, oh, yeah, don't tell him.
We'll just keep it a secret.
Yeah, our secret.
Anyways, that's it.
Now that I know what it is, I love it. Yes. Before, I'm like, what? Alright, sounds good. Um, we'll go on to committee reports. Anyone have a committee report, Doc? I knew you would.
Of course. It was, okay, it was committee central last week, it seemed like. And we even had one canceled, uh, Athletic Board Control.
Control, yes.
That was canceled last week. But we still had a few other ones, so. Um, I just wrote kind of a few points of the two that I did go to, um, for the district leadership team, which was fantastic. Um, I have to say, I am gonna miss some people for next year when, uh, district leadership team happens. We're gonna, we're gonna be, uh, having a few changes in there. But, um, you know, uh, this last meeting, um, that happened Wednesday was really, really good. Um, a few things that I had noted, and one of them hilariously was how, uh, I forget who it was, but someone mentioned how the settlement policy is going really good, and like how it can be improved. And then, of course, you guys came in, I'm like, well, you know, I guess, uh, this open policy can be even more improved by not, we just haven't done it in the first place. So, you know, that's a good thing. Uh, so, yeah, that's one of my things. And then, um, I know we had an update on summer school, which is, so honestly, it seems like a pretty good deal. I, gee, I kinda wanted to go, but I'm probably a little bit too far out for that. And then, uh, uh, there's some new learning techniques, which there always is when it comes to district leadership teams, which I really appreciate it because I think it's really interesting how the students do learn, 'cause it always grows throughout the years. I mean, even since I was in high school, how kids learn and the different techniques for that is just vastly different. So we learned about, of course, our hexagonal thinking. My favorite one, which, um, which I really appreciated was the broken calculator. Uh, if you guys remember that one, but that was a really cool one. And then, uh, the Domtar, you know, I think we talked about it before, but they donated a ton of these vertical boards. And it seems like, I think it's math teachers. They're just absolutely loving it, it seems like, so. I really appreciated all that from the district leadership team, uh, committee meeting. And of course, uh, the day after, I had the finance committee meeting. And of course, I think Ryan pretty much hit most of it. But most of our conversation was about that five-year forecast. I mean, really kind of where we wanted to go with that. And, you know, I mean, Ryan hit it right on the nail, is this, you know, the state hasn't fully determined what, I mean, what their part of the funding is gonna be. So whatever numbers we come up with, you know, who knows what it's gonna be? It really just depends on, on what they end up coming up with. And hopefully we hit it pretty close, but if not, it's always subject to change. It's not like it's gonna make a big deal. Um, and then I learned, I didn't even know about this. Did you guys know what, there's inside and outside village? I thought it was all just one thing. There's two different parts. And let me see if I get this right, Ryan. Is it five point seven? We account for five point seven of those mills. Do it again. So if you guys didn't know, look it up, because I cannot explain it to you. It's a little too complicated. But, um, and then, uh, the last note I have here, uh, we had an extremely large refund from the, uh, M C E S C, because we didn't need as many kids to be a part of that program or a program connected to it. So we ended up receiving a pretty good refund. And I think that's a pretty darn good thing, when you receive a bunch of money and don't have to spend it. So, um, that's always good. But those are the only committee things I had, uh, this, thank you.
Since, uh, Mr. Llewellyn's not here to report from the State House, um, I've got one small thing. Uh, the governor signed an executive order yesterday on trades at tech school training, that the state is going to, um, budget monies for, um, education to major manufacturing facilities to, uh, trades like HVAC plumbing, electrical, that they're not only going to, the governor doesn't want them to only go for a college degree, per se, that the trade schools are just as valuable. Um, there, there's a huge, huge demand right now for the trades. Also, like nursing and police force, first responders, and things like that. But the trades have taken such a hit over the years that this committee that has set this up is going to be educating a lot of the manufacturing facilities, a lot of the trades groups, um, in how to get the word out that they're actually hiring and what they're offering for, uh, for training to get these kids involved at the trade levels and at skilled workers. Um, there's also gonna be initiatives out there to, uh, help raise those, those pays a little bit, to get those folks interested in that kinda stuff. It's been a long time, probably back since the Bush era, that it's been college, 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 college. And the trades are taking such a hit. Um, over the last four years, between my two sons that graduated, their friends have come to me and said, hey, you've been in the trades a very long time. You know, what, what should I look at? A lot of the trade schools, uh, are out there, but they're, they're pretty expensive to get involved in. They're kinda starting to disappear. A lot of these companies are offering free training. Uh, they're actually paying you to do so. Most of the trades are starting off at twenty-two dollars an hour with benefits to trade, to train you. In the state of Ohio, the licensed trades, uh, HVAC, electrical plumbing, uh, carpentry, framing, things like that, all of those unions are offering free training, paid training. Uh, within two years, you go from apprentice to adjournment star. Uh, after that, you can go for state licensers. Um, those kids will go from twenty-two dollars an hour up into the thirties and forties, uh, thirty, forty dollars an hour. In the next four years, you're gonna see a plumber that right now, the average is getting paid a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. Those will jump to one seventy to two ten an hour. Uh, the trades are in such high demand, there are so few people getting into it, that that's where the money is gonna be. So college is great, I'm not saying don't go for it, but if you're not built for that, I was not. Uh, I went to a tech school, um, even kinda constantly blocked my wife because I didn't have any college education. It's funny, 'cause I put her through her college education as a truism. Um, but in saying that, uh, it's not for everybody, so please look at those, take advantage of that. Um, they're gonna be out there and at least it'll be more, uh, public awareness to those things that are offered.
Anybody else have a committee report? Okay. Um, well, I don't know, do you want to do comment for the superintendent?
I, or myself, whichever.
Okay.
Okay, I can do that. Okay. Yeah, really, uh, I wanted to congratulate our seniors who were in the spotlight today, both very well spoken and impressive individuals. Um, and to think that, you know, an eighteen-year-old already has her associate's degree and a lock on payment for a bachelor's and a master's is incredible. So pass off to Candace and the crew for, you know, creating such an environment that those things are possible. Uh, also, I wanna thank all four of the principals, all five of the principals who came also this evening. Mrs. Kinsler was here in the audience and, and Mrs. Hafner, uh, along with Mr. Christic, Dr. Woods, and our newest principal, um, Mr. White. All of you did a great job presenting today. And I appreciate, uh, the effort that you put into the, the thought that is, is going ahead of time to communicate to parents and to students what the expectations are and, um, set us up for success as we implement this new quote-unree policy.
Thank you. Ryan, we'll go to comments from the chair. Mr. Sloan, you have any?
Uh, just wanted to congratulate the seniors and, um, wish, wish them the best of luck. And that's, that's it for the evening.
Thank you. Um, our West Carrollton Education Association, the Classical Employees Association, is not with us this evening. So we'll go to comments from Central Office. Mr. Hag, anything this evening?
Uh, no, not, not this evening.
Alright, thank you. Mrs. Jones?
I just wanna congratulate Nathan and, and Aria specifically for coming and, um, hearing their story and all the accomplishments that they've, that they, um, have accumulated over time. But I'm also very excited about the younger bags, because, especially in, in curriculum, um, it's just gonna, it's just gonna provide a better learning environment for our students of the quality of, um, the environment in the classroom, of course, outside of the classroom and the hallways. And just hopefully improve learning outcomes. You know, we just, um, presented our report card. And so I just think those, those outcomes are going to improve by removing. our report card, and so I just think those, those outcomes are going to improve by removing the big barrier of self doubt. So I'm excited to see the outcomes in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Barry, anything this evening?
No.
We will, we do not have any general comments from the public this evening, so we'll go to comments from the board. Hag, maybe you first.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
All right, Barry, set your clocks.
Oh, no, we're on a timer.
I'll be quick. Of course, you know, everyone, I'm sure everyone's got to thank Nia, or congratulate Nia Payton for just the amount of amazing work that they've done. But I kind of want to go a little bit of step back. I want to thank Ms. Bab, well, I see her as Ms. Bab still, but Ms. Sloan, Mr. Hawk, and Mr. Neil. I know all four of those people, all four of them are just incredible teachers, and, you know, just to give them a little bit of love too, because I know how hard it is to be a teacher sometimes, and to be an exceptional one at that is always something that needs to be congratulated. So, I wanted to mention that. And then, of course, our track and field players. I hope they make it to state. That's amazing to hear how good our track and field is, and they've always been pretty good, though. So I'm happy that we're keeping that same, that same thing going on. And then the parts for kindness, I've been excited to hear about this. We have to talk, I have a few ideas, so hopefully we can work on some neat things together. And then, of course, like always, I have a little quote, and this is for the kids that are about to graduate. I mean, I know it's always an interesting thing, jumping into a new world almost, and almost like adulting all of a sudden, you know, it's kind of a scary thing, but I always want to remind them that we're never too crazy for dreaming. What's crazier than dreaming is not trying at all, and that's why I change the whole thing. So, hope they can take that to heart. Thank you, guys.
First and foremost, thank you for the presentation on the Yonder Bags. I'm a huge supporter of keeping those stones quiet through school. I have reported over multiple meetings about screen time. Our fifth graders are the first full-screen babies to move forward. So, Dr. Woods is probably on the cusp of those students being full-time, eight hours plus a day on a screen of some sort. The, the numbers are staggering. 10 to 13-year-olds pushing nine and a half hours on a screen. You know, there's the social aspect, there's the mental aspect, there is the, just the exposure to the world that most kids don't need. Things that they shouldn't see, things that they shouldn't worry about, etc., are affecting their mental health. So I think it's a great idea, and it's full of support here. I want to congratulate all the seniors. Our next meeting, you will be graduated. This is it. This is, you're in the last two weeks, which I know your last two weeks is not truly school anyways, so have fun, be safe. Unfortunately, some, some accidents happen during this time period, because everybody's kind of carefree and excited and not being careful. So please be careful and arrive safe to your graduation. Pirate PAX has been struggling throughout the year with volunteers, with donations, food and money. We had a group of parents and citizens in West Carrollton and outside the city that have really stepped up. We've had the blood bank and organ donor group downtown, they did a huge drive-through, so over 5,500 items and $2,500 in cash were donated, plus they have made a huge effort to send some of their team members out to help us pack for these nights. We went to alternating between a couple of schools. It's not just us as a charity that's hurting, but all the food banks, all the charities around the area are seeing about a 70% decline since COVID. It hurts those, those small groups like that. Our group feeds kids in the weekend for, for West Carrollton. We were feeding 514 kids every two weeks. The last two weeks here, we did 514 each week. That's a lot. That's a big number. I just ask that if you get a chance, time is the most valuable thing that you own. If you don't have the money, you don't have food to donate, think about giving some time. And if not with us, it's another organization. So I want to thank those that helped out. We truly had a huge food drive that actually took care of our last month. I'm the director of that organization. I spend about $1,900 a week on food. We have a budget of about $38,000 this year to feed those 500 kids a weekend supplement. So that's a big thing. We're going into the summer on a great note, hope that momentum keeps up. So if you can, ask what you donate, Pirate Pax Network is very simple. Thank you.
And I just want to also make mention that next time we meet, all of our seniors will be graduated. I think that's really exciting for everyone to look forward to the future, and I just want to say thank you to the principals that presented tonight, giving us clarity on the Yonder Bags. I think that that's a really exciting and challenging situation that we have to tend to, to make sure the students have the best experience possible in our district. Thank you.
Okay, well, it's down to me. I had a few things. Tennis had sectionals. We did make it to the second round with our dream team doubles team, so they played well. I'm very proud of them. We did have Tommy Hutt and Ben Carpenter, our original first doubles team, is being awarded the MBL second team, All Honors. Seth Bernal, Ben Carpenter, and they're getting, that's the, the other first doubles, are getting honorable mention all area. And one thing that I, I'm very proud of is Seth, Tommy, and Gus all have academic honors. So I'm very, very proud of them. They did such a great job. And I forgot, he's, actually Dallas is graduating early, he is technically a junior, and has enough credit hours so he can go ahead and graduate. So, very proud of all of them. We had a great season. Girls are now looking to, to start up, but I'd like to give a shout out to the bus drivers. We do appreciate you, and we just had staff appreciation, so we appreciate all of our staff. I ride buses all the time, so I really appreciate everything that goes into doing that. And, you know, we, we are lucky here in this district. We've been able to keep our buses rolling. Other districts have had momentous problems with their staffing of their transportation department. Never had to worry about being, you know, where's the bus, or, or being late. Everything was on time this year, as usual, and if there was an issue, we got picked up in a timely manner, and it was fine. Graduation, onto, I am a YouTube holder of John Gordon, who does a lot of books and stuff, and he sent out an email this week that I took notice to. Eleven lessons for graduates, and you. I just highlighted a couple of them. You are here for a reason. The most important thing you can do in life is to find, live, and share your purpose. You should always follow your passion. You should learn from every job experience, every job, good or bad, prepares you for the work you were ultimately born to do. Your dream job is likely not the one you dreamed about. So often, we end up in amazing careers that we have, that have nothing to do with our college degree or childhood dreams. Don't rush the future, let everything go, and be the seed out there. So I, I really appreciated that. It's, it's home. I've graduated three sons of, of my own, and, and they are all doing well. But it is, it is a, some of them, one of them got his dream job, another went on to fulfill his, what he had set out to do. And the middle one, he's doing something a little different than he originally thought he was going to do, but he has made it very successful. So, there is, don't, don't lose sight, something will come about, and you will find your spot. We do not have an executive session this evening, nor a work session, so we'll entertain a motion in second to adjourn this week.
Roll call please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mendy?
Yes.
And this concludes this evening's meeting. Thank you very much.